Not be here, she's dealing with a serious family personal problem situation and she's gonna take care of that. So she will not be here. And New East is running late, just for the record, due to weather. And so we're gonna just have an informal discussion. If we need to, we'll recess until they get here. So without, with that, go ahead and ask your question of...
Yeah, if you hop on here, so Water Tower Plaza, Hardscape. Has anybody thought about maybe doing like a break sale? Is that possible?
No, no, not, this is, these are just very preliminary numbers and they were just trying to be conservative and throw out what they thought it might entail. I don't see why not.
I love the idea.
At this point, everything's on the table.
Yeah, at this point, yeah, truly.
I guess it goes tend to be very popular, you know, community involvement.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunities with something, with the project at this scope to add some real community involvement into it, I think. Yeah.
So, why don't, why don't you just walk us through what you sent us, just to make sure we're all on this level playing field here and...
So, I wanna, you know, preface it all, all of this with just that these are, these are ballpark numbers. Really, the, until we get, until we really clarify what the exact vision is and until a timeline is established and even the scope of some of these public improvements that are listed here, for example, Commissioner Finnis, the Water Tower Lot, you know, what's the scope of that, what's, or the Hardscape, what's the scope, what's community involvement? A lot of these are flexible, but I hope that the takeaway from this will be that there's a lot of wiggle room in this project to do a really, a really significant public improvement and have the town span from, from one end of the spectrum where we do one level of public improvements and end up with a significant amount of extra, of surplus, or to go all the way through with the, with the recommended product, scope that New East has and the town more or less ends up netting out zero from a, from a, just a purely financial transaction standpoint, but, but not by any means zero in the sense of the, the long-term impact of the project. So, what, the sample budget overview of the purchase price, one, 1.84 million, which is the appraised value of the Niven Price Building and the corner parcel, we'll call it Community Corner today so that we're, I don't have to keep deciding what to call it. And, and so then, the first line there is minus the public improvements paid by the town. That's 650,000 if you, if you go down there to where it says Public Improvements in Proposal. Those are the public improvements that New East really sees as being crucial, a critical point of the development, of a development agreement because they see that that really will allow them to maximize the value of their private portion of the project and, and really don't see, or really would make it harder for, for them to be able to produce the kind of product that we want them to without those improvements. So that's the West North Main Streets, Streets and Church Streets, Street Scape. That cost there is based on some 2015 estimates we got because these plans are existing from CDM Smith, who did them in 2015, added, so we've adjusted for inflation and also some additional scope because the CDM Smith plans didn't really provide, they didn't provide curb and gutter, for example, on Church Street, it was just a meandering sidewalk. So we've, we've added some escalation to that than the Niven, the New East wants to redo and I think we won't do it.
So just to, since we're just in very loose form here, so we heard, we've heard from Matt at our two-by-two how at the regional transportation level, we've had to put a percentage on contingency just because these cost escalations. What was your percentage of contingency added to the original here? I mean, so is this a real number or is this something that we, is probably gonna grow? Is, and again, it's a ballpark at this point, but that's, I don't wanna get blindsided by where this is.
I believe we used, was it 15% per year?
Inflation adjusted for 10% per year.
Okay.
There was a sizable degree of contingency allowed because of the unknowns.
Okay.
The degree of unknowns and so, again, with the stormwater side, there's the big question marks that there's a big placeholder for if we have to do...
In this number?
Right.
Okay.
And so, my expectation is not that it would continue to build on top of that. My expectation is that as we get more details, as we're all able to kind of move in the direction, we refine this more so it, up or down, it still has more defensible information behind it, but I think this is still...
You got a big enough contingency in here to plan for that, okay.
To feel comfortable giving a number in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's, that's, and all these numbers were done with that in mind. We, we've got, if you see the North Broom Street Sidewalk, $350,000 there, that was a, an estimate from New East actually because we haven't actually planned the scope of improvements that they would propose on North Broom Street. But, again, that's a, is a conservative number and the, they would only ask the town to pay 50% of whatever those costs end up being. So if you take a 350 for their conservative estimate and half of that, that's curb and gutter, a planning strip, some nice wider sidewalk. And again, the, there's, Matt mentioned the stormwater management for both of the parcels in question. The goal is to design the project in a way that doesn't, that doesn't require that additional stormwater treatment, but if, if it did, then there, they would ask the town to help out with 50% of that. So you get that total improvements numbers of 650,000 now. If you, and then the next line you see is the 603,000. This, candidly, this, this number is the difference between what their initial offer price was and what the appraised value of the property is. We have to sell the property at fair market value by statute. But this is a way of, of just contributing back into the project beyond just the public improvements in an effort to, to, to make the numbers work on the developer's side.
Is this going to discount the property to get the property stayed in the line of the property?
It's accounting, yeah, you move it from one part of the ledger to the other, but it is allowed by statute per, per Charlie. But that, it's not...
But it's, it's with stipulation back into you must perform certain things, right?
Exactly. We have control because, because it's of the development agreement, we, one of the good things about this approach that we've, that we've been saying is that we do have control over how, over how the building is built, how it looks, the development of the property, the whole layout. So that's money directly back into the project. So discounting the property might not be the right term because we actually are, that money is, is then back, directly back into their, their project, which we have control over through covenants and through the development agreement process. So if you take that, that's how you get that 500, so the, the purchase price minus the public improvements minus the contribution, that gets us to 587,000 at the end of the day. That's, that's, that's money into the town's bank account, again, estimates, but that's, that gives you a sense of, of the, this is a very feasible, very viable project. There's a lot of, we're not cutting it close at that number in terms of the town having to, to come out of, of our, of other general fund, for example. Now then, the next, the next number you see below that though is, is the negative 38,000 or $38,000 the town would end up spending at the end of the day. That's if the town does the, what they're calling the optional, optional public amenities. Those are not crucial to the project. The town can decide, we can design them and just not build them, we cannot design them at all. And that's some of the questions that the board would, or that New East will be talking to the board about when they get here, is kind of getting a sense of what the board wants, the extent of the improvements. So that's the Niven Price Parking Lot. They actually don't need the Niven Price Parking Lot to be paved. If we're already maximizing the spaces, which we, we did a good job doing that when we redid it earlier this year, we don't necessarily have to do it. If they, if the town wants to do it, there's an efficiency gain by, by having the developer do it all at once when they're designing the whole, these two blocks. If it's something the board wants to do, now would be the time to do it because it's happening all at once. Same thing with the pedestrian pathway between North Broom and Church Street. So that's, that's where, basically if you picture behind the Bike Depot and the Duncan McDonald House all the way through to that block, it really makes a more contiguous project if people are able to, to walk out of the proposed restaurant at the corner of Broom and Main, walk past the Water Tower, walk all the way to Niven Price and have it feel like it's one place. And again, it's the placemaking, it's, it's making it much more of an impact than just scattered buildings. So it's, it's something to think about. And then, of course, the Water Tower Plaza. I've got some numbers below as well and, and we, we keep saying this and I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but I do because I think it's important because, to, to just emphasize that this, this is really, this whole, this whole project is really an economic development legacy project as it's being proposed here. This is something that's going to transform these two blocks in downtown. It's much more than just the bottom line numbers that you see there highlighted, although those are important. Those are one, that's, those are one time and it's done. The 587,000, even if we got that, we spent it on one thing and it's done. What the real value of this project is, is the, the benefits in perpetuity. And first of all, that's the tax revenue impacts, those are just estimated, our finance director helped us with that, to come up with that number. That, that's just, that's just from the additional assessed value, that doesn't count personal property, doesn't count spillover effects from the people who, who go visit these businesses that will be in these new buildings and the money they'll then spend downtown to the other businesses. Then we get to...
Doesn't include Niven's Price though?
That, that doesn't.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's, that's without Niven Price and the out parcel behind it. So then, in addition to just the, the tax revenue impacts, you're, you're looking at just the, what a project like this would do, bringing in new Class A office space, brand new downtown infill buildings, that's gonna end up having an impact on the entire downtown because you're gonna have all of a sudden some pretty significant, in a good way, competition for the existing, man, for lack of a better term, people will have to continue to up their game in the downtown to compete with this kind of project. And I think that is a, that is going to elevate the entire downtown. You're gonna have apartment, 200, there are more apartments coming in, in, within the next year, you're gonna have a, you know, 500 some new people living downtown and why would we want them to have to get in their car and drive north or go to Indyland or Monroe? We would like this quality development to happen so that they stay here, minimize car trips, minimize traffic. I mean, it's really, there's, there's, there's a lot of things to this project that are over and above just the, the one-time real estate transaction. And then, finally, I know this is gonna be up for further discussion today, but we did, I did add a little residential property multiplier table down below. North Carolina Department of Commerce provided a report in 2014 to North Carolina Main Street. They talked about the impact of upper story residential units in the downtown and within a one-mile radius of, of an upper story residential unit, an average couple spends $18,700 a year, you times that by 20 units and that's a lot of annual economic impact for the downtown. Because where are these people, when they have people come visit, when they go out at night, odds are they're gonna be spending money right in Waxaw in the downtown. So that's, that's, that's how the spreadsheet works.
Hey Kurt, do you have a tax revenue impact for the Niven Price Building where we can see kind of what are we gaining from it now and what will we gain from it with what New East is proposing?
I, I don't have one for the Niven Price Building at this time. I, I think because the scope of that, they, they were able to, it was easier for them to give a valuation on the potential buildings on the corner than to know the full extent of how the Niven Price will, will redevelop. Currently, it's, I mean, it's a town-owned building, so it's not, there is no tax revenue from it.
Look, I'm more so trying to understand, we, we have real property tax, but I would also like to know, did we give any thought to what the sales tax numbers would be? Do we have any kind of way to estimate that?
The sales tax numbers are really difficult because they're not, it's, it's not like the sales tax paid in Waxaw stays in Waxaw, it goes back to the state where it's then redistributed with a formula based on population and, so there's not really a way to estimate that.
Back to the county and the county distributes it.
Yeah, there's not really a way to get an accurate number on that.
I mean, you could conservatively estimate the Niven's Price to be roughly about a 1.82 million dollar property assessed valuation when the building's done, given the...
Right, if you look at what it's appraised for and, and yes, instead of then times it by .38, that's a good point.
I have a question about Building B. So it says here, a one-to-three story commercial building. Is there, is that kind of more up to us if we want it to be one-to-three story? And then also, so they're saying that they did not feel that there was enough commercial or I guess office space to switch the top of Building A, what is it, A1, A2 to...
Uh, B, A2, I think.
But they feel like, so would one, if, if we chose to stick with A1, would they need to get rid of Building B or do those, is there any correlation between those two buildings regarding that?
That's a, that's a good question, but I, I'm not sure about whether, that'll be a question for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it, just making sure I understand. They list each of these as three-story because that's what the code allows?
That's the maximum.
Right.
The code will allow you.
Okay.
And they've got, the, the presentation they'll share, it goes more in depth on, on both of those questions, I just don't wanna get ahead of it.
So right now, you're dependent upon them getting here?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I think it's more productive.
You don't wanna go too far and then...
I don't wanna start speculating, yeah.
Yeah, speculating, yeah.
On the A1, is that A1? Yeah, A1, so that is the only one that could be a three-story to match the tallest building downtown, if I remember correctly of how the Form Based Codes were designed. Is that correct? Or are you talking about A2 could be three stories with retail on the bottom and two stories of apartments, basically?
I, I, I don't know if, I don't know that the code...
If that's three stories.
Yeah, I don't know that the code would, no, it should allow three stories for any, for any of the buildings, not just A1. So A2 could be three stories, by the code, at least.
Hmm. Thank you, I can't see that.
I know. And they'll, and, and they'll, they'll go through, so...
Oh, I see it now, thank you.
They've come up with some creative, again, they'll be here in a couple minutes now, but they, they've come up with a, a creative alternative to the building A2 that can be discussed. I think their plan is to present a, kind of try to make a binary choice for the board to, to help think through that.
So why don't we take a recess until they get here?
Sounds good.
Thanks for taking us through that.
Thank you.
You start texting on your phone, we...
Wonderful, hello everyone. My name is Susanna Dancy and Matt will be here.
He's coming.
He'll be here in a minute, so let me breathe deeply, say hello and introduce myself. I am, I'm based in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. I do a whole lot of work with small scale and incremental development and was really excited to see this opportunity here in Waxaw and so I'm happy to be here with y'all and hopefully we'll be able to answer, answer some of your questions as we figure out how to move forward. I just stole someone's water, stole his water, so let me give it back. Let's see, just introducing myself.
And would you make sure your microphone's on and everything?
Yes.
So, because we do have people watching from home.
Okay, oh boy. So, is it, is it working? The red light's on, so, okay. All right, fabulous. You can introduce yourself now.
Sure, my name is Matt Crook. Really happy to be here. I'm a native of Union County, I grew up in the Fairview area, so postal code was Indian Trail, but it was Office 601. I went to Pima High School. My mom was a teacher in Union County for 32 years. My dad worked for Monroe for City Utilities as part of his career. So I've known Waxaw ever since I was a kid, grew up playing soccer around here and Waxaw's definitely changed over the years. But I love seeing that Waxaw's retained its character and its charm as a small town destination that it's been for so many years. But I, as I've kind of mentioned, this is my home, I feel like I'm still a part of this home, my mom still lives in Union County. And I feel very privileged to be a part of a development team that can partner with the town of Waxaw to help implement some of the vision that you all have already, you know, taken years to put together. And so I don't necessarily look at this as some developers might, which would be purely transactional. I look at it like, how can we as private developers be a vehicle for you all to achieve your vision, your aspirations and what you wanna see in your downtown? So I've been in conversations with Kurt for almost two years now, just interested in what's going on in downtown Waxaw. So this is not, even though we live in Chapel Hill, this is not us coming in from afar, this is just definitely something that we've been, or I've been very interested in for a while now.
Okay, so I, I put together this presentation to kind of walk us through, through the project and what some of the questions that are decision points that we have, that we feel like y'all need to make so that then we can figure out how, how to proceed with the development agreement to get y'all what you're wanting and to serve the, the goals that we've discussed. So I'm gonna learn how to use this.
Yeah.
All right, there we go. So, and there's the pointer, look at that. So our agenda for, for this is to talk about kind of the background of how did we get here or where, where did we start? Where did y'all start with this and what were you trying to achieve? We'll talk through what our proposal is and then we'll, we'll go into the areas where we need your guidance so that we know how to proceed. So let's start first with the...
How would you like to do this? Do you wanna go all the way through it or would you like questions as we go along?
Thank you for asking. There will be, I think there'll be moments when we stop and, and start talking about things, so feel free to interrupt, but there are particular, I've, I've kind of done this to where we'll go to the first point and then we'll talk about that and then we'll move to the next point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So the ULI Technical Assistance Panel, as y'all know, it, it identified some redevelopment opportunities for your downtown, specifically using town-owned properties. It created a roadmap for redevelopment of those properties and it suggested that a public-private partnership might be the way to achieve the goals that, that you've been trying, or that you're trying to achieve as a town and to do it more effectively. to achieve as a town, and to do it more effectively, in a quicker manner, or more successfully. So the three things that were identified in the RFP that we responded to were to prioritize economic development for your downtown, to honor Waxaw's history and character, and then to position the town to make investments in public amenities. So those would be things like parking infrastructure, civic spaces, and using the town-owned properties effectively. So here are the parcels that are, that are owned by the town. I've identified the house that's on the corner of Church and McDonald. I've identified that property on here as well, because that could be, specifically, I identified it because of the horizontal leg of that provides an opportunity to create some pedestrian connectivity, and so it seemed appropriate to include that. We're not suggesting any significant changes to the immediate area around the house, although that's possible should something, you know, something be thought of or discovered along the way. But primarily, that parcel is on there because of that horizontal, because of that leg and how it connects, offers that opportunity for pedestrians. So here is the plan that was in our proposal. The Nivens Price Building is not marked in this, in this plan, and I wish that it were. But as you know, okay, what button do I push?
The top.
That one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's the Nivens Price Building. And then we have three new construction buildings that we're discussing. A1 here would be a mixed-use commercial, solely commercial building. A2 would be ground floor, ground floor retail here in the stark color. And then you can see here, the dotted line would be where the building, the second and third floor of the building would be larger. These are two buildings, and they would be attached by a party wall. Then over here is, this building is a small building, 1,500 square foot, more or less, footprint. It might be a two-story building, it might be a one-story building. We just need to get further along in that. The, obviously, the caution about a two-story building is the elevator requirements that go with, that go with that. And so those economics for building the small may keep it at a one-story building. And then over here is, of course, the summary. All right. So to go back to that list, the, the goals that were identified in the RFP were to honor Waxaw's character. And so the way that we feel that we're doing that in this project is to restore the facade of the Nivens Price Building. As we said in the project, we're certainly open to, to pursuing getting it on to, to the National Register. Is that what we were talking about?
Landmark status.
Landmark status. That was it, to get it into landmark status. We feel like the scale of the development that we are, that we are proposing is, reinforces the small-town character of Waxaw, and it prioritizes pedestrian experience, which is already good in Waxaw. Your town is very, very charming, and we're just looking to reinforce that.
We promise not to misspell the name in any type of signage either.
That too, though I did right there.
It's okay.
All right. So, looking at your other goal of prioritizing economic development, what we've proposed, and this is not counting the square footage in the Nivens Price Building. This is just the new construction in terms of, of the square, of the programming that's listed here. We're talking about 11,300 square feet of restaurant and retail space, 9,600 square feet of office space, and we are asking that the town would, would rent half of that. My, my thought on that, just as an aside, was that the town would actually occupy that space with office building, that it would not be a, a master lease where you are leasing and then subleasing. I had anticipated that since y'all are trying to get out of the landlord business, you would not then want to turn around and get right back into it. But that is an important part, and we can talk about that a bit later, about why the town leasing half of the space is important. And then the upper-story use, again, on building A2, we are proposing up to 22 luxury apartments. They would, they would be roughly 700 square feet in square footage. They would be one-bedroom apartments, not efficiencies. And they're geared towards a professional, typically 30-something renter. And these people are renters by choice, by lifestyle and not by necessity. They are, these would not be considered affordable apartments. We're looking at rents that would be at least what the cotton mill rents are, or not cotton mill, but the Mill on Main are. So...
Which are?
Roughly $1,200 a month.
Yes.
They're very based on floor plan, but...
Some of them go up to $1,600. I mean, yeah.
And, and I do want to note about Mill on Main that they have a mixture of one- and two-bedroom units available, or, excuse me, units in their project. They have no one-bedroom units available at all. They have, last time I checked, they had four vacancies or four units that were available. All of those were two-bedroom units. And so we think that, that's one example, but we think that there is both sufficient demand and perhaps even pent-up demand for one-bedrooms. And that just, that is a lifestyle issue, that people are choosing now to live by themselves. And so one-bedrooms historically have not been, there's not been sufficient supply of one-bedrooms in the, in the housing market. So that, that is part of why we view all of these as being one-bedroom units.
I have a question. Would this be stairs up to each apartment if that was agreed upon, or will it be in an elevator to a central location and down a hallway, too?
There would be a central location and down a hallway. One of the reasons, one of, one of the reasons that the buildings would be attached to each other is so that only one elevator is necessary from a, from a code standpoint. There still would, we would obviously be meeting all kinds of fire code and sprinkler requirements and those types of things. But one of the reasons that these are, as I said, are attached is so that we could have one elevator in the A1 building, and then that meet, again, meets accessibility requirements. But they, I don't see them as being ground-floor entry. There would be an entrance to the second, you know, you would go up to the second floor to get to the apartments. They would be separate from the, from the retail use on the ground floor.
But they would be able to be entered by building A1, which means they would have to go through that commercial retail space and then kind of buzz through?
That would not be the primary entrance.
Okay.
The primary entrance would be from Broome Street.
Okay.
Probably at the, at the two ends of the building. And then a center hallway that runs the second floor, possibly the third floor, depending on whether we went for a loft version that you enter on the second floor and then have, you know, so a loft version being second to third floor units, or whether we went with having two sets of, two floors of flats. There are benefits or strengths to both types.
So you're definitely talking about a ground floor of retail.
Yes.
And two floors of apartments.
Yes.
Rather than one floor loft.
Well, the one-floor loft, it would be two floors. It would be you enter it on the second floor, and you can travel up to the third floor in the interior of the unit.
But accessing the residential would be through a secured entrance that, you know, I guess the office users above A1 would also be able to access. They would just would not be able to access the hallways going into the residential area. And vice versa, the residents wouldn't be able to access the hallways going into the office.
Most of the offices would be accessed directly from North Broome Street, so it would be a storefront. What I'm imagining is that the ground floor there, it would be retail or service retail. Service retail being something like H&R Block, an accountant, graphic designer, you know, that it's an office use, but that there's a fairly large interface with, with the public. Exactly.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
With 22 apartments, then you would have 22 parking spaces since they're one-bedroom?
Yes.
And the parking for retail in that area is, how many?
We would have no onsite, no onsite parking for any of the commercial uses in our proposal. The only onsite parking that we'd be providing would be for residential. The businesses would use on-street parking or the town parking.
Right, Nivens area.
Exactly. So the, the breakdown, okay, so if you recall, so the uses are here, restaurant-retail being 11,000 and change, office being almost 10,000, residential being 22 units. The, the breakdown by the buildings is A1 on the corner would be 14,400 square feet. A2 would be 23,000 square feet, and Building B would be 1,500 to 3,000 square feet. Again, we would, we need to get further along in that one to know whether that would be a, a one-story or a two-story building. So the guidance that we need here, and, and again, this is where we'll stop and talk a bit, and I'm glad that y'all are asking questions along the way. But I'd like for us to, to talk a bit about the guidance for A1 and A2. The feedback that we've gotten is that there's some concern about putting residential, upstairs residential on Broome Street. And so we'd like to talk through those decisions, because then knowing which way you want to go guides the direction that we, that we take, both our negotiations, but also then the funds that we start spending on design. So anyway, A1, the way, the way we have proposed it is ground floor of restaurant and retail, primarily restaurant. 4,800 square feet is a little bit large for the Waxaw location, so I suspect that we'll end up with 3,600 square feet of, of restaurant and about 1,200 square feet of, of retail. The upper floors would be 9,600 square feet. That's gross, so that's including all of the hallways and elevators.
Kurt, what's approximate size of, say, 701 Main, or, or what would be the equivalent of a 4,800-square-foot restaurant that we have here? Or do we have one that big?
So 701 Main is a lot bigger than that because they have the...
The party space.
Yeah, I think they have about 12,000 square feet.
Okay.
So you'd be looking, 4,800 square feet is probably twice Maxwell's.
Twice Maxwell's, okay. Just context helps, I think helps everybody.
Oh, absolutely. Square footage is something that's, that's hard to, hard to visualize, until you have a lot of practice. So we'll get you there. So then Building 2, again, that's an attached building to Building 1 with a party wall and a, a fire door access between the two buildings. That, let's see, that building is 21,000 square feet. The ground floor is 5,000 square feet, and then the upper floors, it's about 16,000 square feet, upper floors. It's about 700 square feet average of the size of those units. So you can tell they're smaller units, but they're not tiny units. They're, you know, sufficient for, easily, they're generous for a single-person occupancy.
So I have a question about A1. So the upper floors of the office there, the 96,000, not 9,000 square feet, is that the office space that you're looking for us to rent?
We would be asking you to rent half of that. That, so one of the two floors, we would like for the town to rent. And again, we can talk about the reasons for that in a bit.
Or all. I mean, if...
The reality is, we probably would need all if we were to exit, so...
If that's a decision you all want to make to...
What's the square footage of the current town hall and the annex together, in the house behind the annex? Do you know?
The current town hall, 6,500. I'm not sure what the annex is.
Well, obviously, we would need it all.
Yeah. I think, I was just asking Erskine, and he said we're at roughly 8,000 right now, so, everything, and...
Well, and, and you may be interested in one of these next options that I'm going to present to you then, depending...
Given us options, keep...
Can I interject a question?
Yes.
Just to clarify here, because even with the A2 building being residential, you would still want the town to lease half of A1?
Yes, yes, we would. And that has, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and explain the, the reasoning for that, is that banks require you to, in order to, in order to finance, in order to finance office buildings or commercial buildings, you need to pre-lease, they say 75%. Sometimes you can get them down to 2/3, but they, they want you to lease, to have pre-leased 75% of the space. And so particularly for smaller, for smaller office buildings or smaller retail space as well, the types of tenants who tend to occupy those spaces, 10,000 or fewer square feet, don't tend to work on the, on the lead time that is necessary for getting a building built. So if someone, if, if an office tenant is looking for 5,000 square feet, they want it next month, or they want it in three months. They don't want to wait two years. By the time two years have passed, they don't need 5,000 square feet. They need 20,000 square feet. But they weren't able to commit to that two years in advance because they were growing companies and that type of thing. So it, it really just has to do with the, the dynamics of, of bank requirements and timing requirements for, for office tenants. All right, so...
I'll add one thing, this 9,600 square feet with two floors, the shape of the building, you could probably optimize the space needs or space requirements. I haven't, I don't really know what, you know, your all's requirements are, but if you have space like that, you, you don't need 300 or 400 square feet per person, per employee. You might need a little less, just depending on how you configure it.
Yeah, I think our, our current town hall, even though it's, you know, and, and ex-included, even though it's around 8,000, we're not utilizing it necessarily very efficiently because it wasn't built for a town hall. It was an office, it was a doctor's office.
And, and I do want to point out that the 9,600 square feet, that that is the gross square footage that on an office building or residential, any type of building, you take out what's called a core, a core factor, which is your fire escapes, your elevators, your hallways, you know, those types of things. So these numbers that we're talking about are gross numbers, not net numbers. In terms of actual leasable space, I would guess that that's probably closer to 8,250, 8,500, something along that, even if we're very efficient. On a building that's this small, you don't end up with a lot of hallways. What you do is try to put your, your elevator in a central location so that then you come out of the elevator and go, you know, and have a small, almost vestibule-type space that the offices go across. And so that helps to increase the efficiencies. But regardless, I just want to make that clear, kind of as, as a side note.
Typically, in these that I've seen or worked in in the past, there, there's several offices for HR and those kinds of things, and then you have a cubicle type, which really helps with the space.
Yes. My husband works for Duke University, and he is in one of the offices that are called non-location critical. And so as Duke has participated in the redevelopment and revitalization of downtown Durham, one of the ways that they've done that is by renting out office space. And they do exactly what we're asking you to do in terms of becoming the credit tenant, so that that gets us financing, which gets us on a timeline, which then we're able to deliver. And by the time it gets built, we've, we've leased up the space. And so that's kind of the setup. But we've found with him, as he went from, his first, his first office was lovely with windows and a door, and his second office was a much smaller office, no window, and now he's down to the cubicle. So indeed, that, that often is the, the progression.
And this is kind of, gets Waxaw, you know, call it five, 10 years from now, you have this Class A office space. Should, you know, your town keep growing and want to move into another location, you then have this office space readily available for those people that are looking, you know, hey, we need to move in, we need 10,000 square feet, or we need 5,000 square feet next year. You know, that would then kind of have that space there for office users in perpetuity in downtown Waxaw.
Is there a commitment that the banks expect when you, for a tenant, to, timeframe on a lease?
Usually it's seven years is, is the minimum, but seven to 10. And certainly, when we get on to another, this would apply in this case as well. We could do 10 years with a 10-year option, if the town wanted to have the opportunity to stay longer, but the ability to move elsewhere. We could set it up like that. But I, I feel like seven to 10 is, and the more space, the longer the commitment.
Committing to a decade, in essence, that's...
Exactly, exactly. So then, this is, again, what we're looking for is some guidance, and this is a presentation of what we, what, what is in our proposal. So then, here are some of the reasons that, that we think, again, some feedback that we had gotten was there was some concern among some of the commissioners that, about having upper... that uh about having upper-story residential. And so these are the reasons, uh, from our perspective, uh, these are the reasons to build upper-story residential. There is a greater market demand for residential in Waxaw than there is for Class A office space, um, at the rents that we would have to charge for that space. It is easier to finance residential units than it is because it, than uh commercial spaces, because the pre-leasing is not required um for the residential, obviously. Downtown living is popular among young professionals, um, empty nesters, that folks are are enjoying the active lifestyle that goes with living downtown. Residents uh spend money in downtown businesses, and so it's good for your economic development to have people living downtown. And um uh it has lower traffic generation than offices do, so that might be another thing that you'd consider as a positive for um for residential.
During peak hours, like-
Yes.
Morning and and early evenings or evenings.
You say there's greater demand for residential. Did you take into account what kind of residential, or did you just say residential in general? For urban residential. There there is, uh, and and what I'm saying is that there is a greater demand for residential in Waxaw than there is a demand for uh office space in Waxaw. Office space at the rates that that this would require, so it's-
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, does your demand for residential, does that include the demand for single-family homes? Or did you specify-
We're primarily looking here for rent.
Okay.
Residential, so-
For rent in a downtown.
Exactly.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
It was specifically narrowed residential.
Yes.
Okay.
So essentially, with this plan, um, the office space that's proposed would solely be l- leased by the town of Waxaw, and there would be no other office space for any other kind of professional office, whether somebody was looking for that at this point in time.
What we are proposing is that um, w- we are proposing that the town lease at least half of it. If the town leases only half of it, then there's forty-eight hundred square feet of office space that is available to the market. If the town leases all of it, then you're you're right, it would not create more, um, it would not create additional office space.
Unless there's like some of that retail space along Broome Street, a five thousand square feet there, and then maybe twelve hundred square feet on North um Main Street. Then we've also looked at the Liner Building, what we're calling Liner Building, Building Number B or B, uh, near the Niven's Price parking lot. If that's two stories, that could have additional office space upstairs from there. But like you said, if there is, you know, an office tenant that's willing and ready to move in and and wait the two years that would take to build the building, we would be more than happy to discuss that leasing potential. We just feel that a, the cost of that building, uh, it's going to probably weed out a lot of office users that might be looking to move in ready, and then the rents that they're used to in Waxaw.
We also have, would have office on the second floor of the Niven's Price building.
Yes, yes. The, I I rec, we haven't talked much about that, but it's um, the Niven's Price building, we, the first floor would be restaurant or retail. The um second floor, as you know, only the center section has has second floor. We view that as being some great uh um office share type space, something that um no one talks about WeWork anymore. Something that that is similar to that kind of an office sharing um space. So we're anticipating that that office space will be there as well. So here are some of the things about the um, the office challenge. Multi-story building, office buildings are expensive to build, and um there's limited demand for, or rather, there is not demonstrated demand for Class A office space. There might be an enormous demand for Class A office space, but since none has been, since none has been offered in this market, it's an uncertainty. And so again, by the town helping to prove that that, by the town um providing that that lease, that allows us to to be able to measure what the market demand is beyond beyond that. The uh rents that are required for for this type of construction are twenty-six dollars a square foot um for the office space. And so that is significantly higher than what the um, what the existing rents are in in downtown. Now, what I have found is that there are some out outside of downtown that are closer to this, but in the downtown core, we can't find any any office rents that are that are in this, in this ballpark. And so when I go to the bank and say, "Hey, Mr. Banker, will you loan us a couple million dollars so we can build this building?" They say, "Who's your customer?" We just know they're there, and that's obviously not very convincing. So um, that's that's why this this partnership in 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 the office space is important. So, um, we've already discussed how banks require significant pre-leasing, and um then the fixed term for the um, for the town lease would be seven or ten years. At least fifty percent of the office space, uh, and that facilitates our financing.
It doesn't have to be the town. If we had-
Right.
Company B over here that said, "We're looking and and we're ready to sign."
Right.
We're just looking for a a tenant for fifty percent-
Exactly.
To go to the bank.
Yes.
Yeah, just a pre-lease of that.
Release, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, your delivery is usually two, two and a half years out. And so, as as I was saying before, it, there aren't that many tenants for smaller spaces who are willing to do, you know, who have that type of lead time.
I just wanted to clarify, because sometime, we've heard before, over time, the requirement for institutional as a, and and that's not what you're asking for at all.
So what is, what is the lease-in date for the uh town hall now? I can't remember, do you know what the end date is?
Three years, yeah.
I wonder, do we extend pre-lease?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it continues um-
Yeah, it will continue until November thirtieth, um, three years into the future.
Twenty twenty-two, which-
Perfect timing.
Creditworthiness does matter-
Yeah.
Uh, for the tenant. So, uh, when they underwrite, when a fa, when a bank will underwrite, they will check into that. The creditworthiness of a town is a lot different from a creditworthiness of a uh hot B, entrepreneur startup that, you know. So, the way they would establish that is, if it's less creditworthy, we need more pre-leased, or it needs to be a longer commitment, or it needs to be a justifiable commitment, so.
Okay, um, so the bigger office challenge. Requiring the upper floors of of building A2, as we've drawn it, um, it kills, it it kills the viability of that building. There is just the the demand, um, uh, the, there's just, I mean, I I think I've already said it enough times, there's just not um the demonstrated demand. We we would not have the confidence that we could get financing on that project and be able to build it within what we think would be a reasonable timeframe, based on the existing data that we have right now. Now, we've been talking about the town renting upper floors. If the town wanted to rent the sixteen thousand square feet of upper floor um on building on, in A2, then that changes the game. But if we need to go to the, um, if we need to go to the market and try to lease half of the of the twenty-five thousand six hundred square feet of office space, so twenty-six thousand six hun, or twenty-five thousand six hundred being half of A1 and half of A2, that's, you know, that is more office space than we are confident that we would be able to lease, um, given the information we have about this market.
What if town took all of this office space in A1?
That's still less, that'd be less than half of it, and I would not feel confident that we could lease sixteen thousand square feet of office space-
Okay.
-to the market.
So, would it be looked at like?
All right. And and then just kind of as a side note, the reason that, um, one of the reasons that office space is more expensive than residential space is that it costs more, it costs more to build, about fifty percent more to build office space than to build residential space. And yet, the the rents are-
A little lower.
They're, uh, office rents, uh, you know, are slightly, they're they're at more or less. I mean, I, the twenty-six dollars a square foot, you couldn't get twenty-six dollars a square foot in res- residential. And converting that to residential, it would not be on par, it would be below that, be closer to twenty. But uh, my point in it, or my point is, is the differential between what you can get for residential and what you can get for commercial is disproportionate to what the cost difference is. And so that's really one of the things that that's really driving this, um, and demand. All right, so, if if y'all say that residential is not an option-
In A2, yeah.
In A2, that we cannot put any residential in A2, then it changes the approach to the project. And so we went back and looked at the ULI um study and what they had talked about in their, in their um, in their proposal suggestion report. And so, uh, to not do the A1 and A2, we go back to the drawing board and we take the ULI approach, build a larger A1 building. Actually, it would be only the A building, because there would not be an A2 building. So we would build um an A building that uh, along the lines of what they talk about in their, in their proposal. And so that gives you a building that's about a little over twenty thousand square feet. The first floor would be um, would be restaurant, retail combinations, sixty-five hundred square feet of that. Then your upper floors, you'd have fourteen thousand square feet gross that could then be available for a town hall. So, um, in this scenario, um, I, what I'm suggesting, since in this scenario, we're thinking, you're the office tenant, we we provide, so, since you would be the the sole office tenant, we're thinking it would be a longer lease, so ten-year lease. Again, we could offer a ten-year option to the town so that the town could stay put for ten more years if it wanted to. If the town wanted to gather up its people and go and finance another building in a different part of town, and that's what Duke does, but or if town, if the town wanted to go and build its, a new town hall at that point, um, to own, then that's another option. But it would, we feel like that a ten-year, um, ten-year with a ten-year option, um, provides flexibility to the town, but enough of a guarantee to us to be able, in terms of lease term, to be able to get the financing and to make those people happy.
And what would the cost be for rent of the fourteen thousand square feet approximately?
It would, it would still be in the, in the twenty-six dollars a square foot.
Okay. So we'd be paying a premium above what is currently paid in the town today?
Yes, yes, but you would be paying what it costs to, what's required in order to build that building.
And that, this would be considered more of a build-to-suit, and so as a developer, we would probably do pretty much the shell and everything, and then the town could decide how much it wants to invest in the outfit. But we're still thinking it would be, because of the cost of construction, just for a multi-story office building, still be north of twenty-six.
And with this option, I'm sorry, with this option, it, this, you're looking for us to to commit to renting all of the square footage for the office space?
Yes, yes, that would be the case. To to clarify some of uh what Matt just said, that the, um, if uh, if the monthly, if the month, or excuse me, the annual expense of of leasing the space, if you wanted to bring that down, one of the ways to address that would be for us to commit to to building it to a particular level, and then anything beyond that would be a capital expense by the town. Um, and that's one way that you could shift some of those costs from your um, from your operating budget to your capital budget. And so that's, that's another way, if if the rent is something that is just, i- is not something the town wants to commit to on an annual basis, one of the ways to buy down that rent effectively, bring down that rent, is is by contributing to some of the outfit uh expenses. And certainly, again, it would be build-to-suit, so um the town would have a lot of control over what those would be.
The downtown development agreement is a great vehicle for for that. And being able to, if the town wanted to shift, you know, part of that operational cost into more capitalization into the project, they could do that, or vice versa.
Steve, do you remember, or Er- Ernest, do you remember, Erskine, do you remember the um amount of rent we're paying now at town hall per month?
It's uh eighty-four hundred, eighty-four to eight thousand four hundred-
Per month?
And sixty-one per month.
So-
Just for the town hall.
So at fourteen thousand square feet at twenty-six, what's the math there per month?
It, yeah, it'd be about um thirty thousand a month. So it's, there's a significant differential, but that, again, is is assuming everything is finished out and built at what would be a Class A office level. The, and I I think that there would be some efficiencies there in terms of of the town being able to to decide what it wants in and not in that, but it would be a significant bump from what you're paying now.
This is close to doubling the size, right? Of town halls.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
You're paying more because you you are getting more space.
That's a good point, yeah.
And better space, I mean, it would be Class A.
Related to that, the um, uh, under this scenario, the the back half of the of the parcel would remain open for for surface parking. And that was in line with what the the ULI approach was, and we really feel like for a town hall, that the town hall does need to have um parking in closer proximity than um, than a market condition would require. That, and the reason I I I describe it that way is that um, y'all have done a great job of arranging your your downtown parking, your on-street parking downtown to make it accessible, and visible is a big part, and you've done a great job of that. So, um, uh, we don't see the lack of onsite parking um as being an impediment for the commercial uses that we are suggesting, specifically because the town has done such a good job with its on-on-street parking and um and parking lot management. But if if you have town hall on this parcel, we do believe that you need to have half of the, half of the parcel for onsite parking.
For daily parking, not to park our vehicles at et cetera, though those have to be taken care of elsewhere.
Yes, exactly, exactly, but we do, I I would anticipate that, um, you might still have some of your employees parking over at the Niven's Price lot-
Mm-hmm.
-or whatever, but that that you would want to have that parking availability for folks who are who are coming to town hall for various reasons, people come to town hall.
Office parking is not as proximal as residential parking. So, an office user will be okay walking a block or two to get to the office space if their boss says, "This is our parking over here."
Yeah.
Residents, not so much. Carrying groceries is not easy to do, a couple blocks.
And customers are less tolerant as well, though they're becoming more and more tolerant. It's more the, it it's fascinating to to delve into kind of consumer psyche, but the perception of parking is as as or even more important than actual parking. As long as people think that they have a chance of getting that front door parking, they're, they seem to be, to tolerate driving past that and getting and having to walk half a block. Anyway, that's a whole nother conversation. So anyway, this is kind of where we are. The next, the next slide takes us into what the next kind of decision point is. And so I thought it might, I don't know how y'all want to handle this, but if you'd like to take some time and kind of have some conversation to to think through this, or ask us any additional questions, that now would be the time to do that, because I'm going to move from this into talking about the public spaces and what the public amenities and and what those options um you'd like to pursue are.
Did you look at, on A1, flip-flopping and putting the residential there in office, just in A2?
I had not, um, but we could look into that, certainly.
I'm just-
Yeah.
Mixing it up a little bit.
Uh-huh.
I can't remember who said, "We can't fit everybody into the A1." We'd, we'd still be scattered around, but in A2, we have a much better shot, and then-
That's an excellent point. I I don't know why we couldn't look into that. We would have the the issue, though, of, we were just talking about with onsite parking, that if we build A1 and A2, there's, there's no onsite parking for anyone other than the residences. So that would be a a question that you'd have to ask from a town operations standpoint, if that's, if that's okay.
It's very common elsewhere, that if you're working in an office building, that you have parking and you walk from there.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's common. It's not common in Waxaw, but it's-
Yeah.
It's common in, as you look at downtown office space.
Yes, I agree.
Even at DPAC up in Durham, I mean, you park in one spot-
Yep.
You can walk three-quarters of a mile.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Let's say, we probably looked at A2 for residential just because of the building footprint. It makes sense for upper-story residential-
Yeah.
For that to be eight thousand square feet. It makes sense for upper story residential for that to be 8,000 square feet for having a smaller compact building. You're going to get less residential uses, but that is something we could look into.
Yeah, that.
I'm not suggesting you do, I just I thought I asked if you'd have.
I had not explored it primarily because of what our concerns have been all along about about creating too much about the challenges of proving proving that office market. And so it just we honestly had not thought of it. But I'm happy to happy to crunch some numbers and kind of look at at what the pros and cons of that approach would be as well.
Erskine, the other thing, and we can't answer this, that this gets to for us is obviously the park and rec buildings, a lot of that is storage now, the outbuildings, and and that gets into the ripple effect of the public works if we get a building there and is it going to be more storage there and how that all plays out. Not that you have answers, but these things all cascade to one another.
I can give you my opinion if you would like my opinion. Looked at this and thought about this a lot until the since the proposal came out. My feelings are that I would not be in favor of having living space on Broom Street or Main Street. I would prefer that it be retail and office. The reason being that there are 245 apartments, some that are will be one-bedroom apartments practically right across the street, and also 20 townhouses that would be built adjacent to that on the backside. And also that the ULI, looking at the money that we've spent on that proposal, to come back with the best use of that property, I kind of agree with with those consultants with the ULI.
I can give you my opinion as well. I I agree that I liked the design that the ULI had come up with, with one central front A1 building and parking in the rear. And I'm not, I don't know what the numbers crunch out to be economically for town hall, but I'm not opposed to that idea. There's something appealing about saying town hall is located right downtown on the corner. There's something instinctively appealing about saying that. Can you find town hall? Yeah, it's right there on the corner. I don't know if the numbers work out, we'd have to find that out, but I'm really not a big fan of the residential.
If I can interject here, I think that if you said it was 30,000 a month, 12, that's 380,000 a year. Over a 10-year lease, it would be 3.8 million dollars for the town hall space of 14,000, correct?
Yes, more or less.
So connecting the past with the future, way back, the original intent of that corner was.
A town hall.
Ground floor, retail, and town hall above.
Oh, isn't that something?
So and so the ULI did kind of match that, whether intentional or not, I don't know, but it just it kind of blended in. I think I think this approach makes sense. I'm not opposed or not or for the, we're going to find out what apartments do to downtown because we got that got it coming, so we don't know what we don't know right now. But I think the harsh reality of giving the town some stability with the 10-year lease while the town figures out over the next decade what it really wants to do with the town hall, because that in and of itself is at least a $10 million project, and everybody around here that has tried to build one has gone over their original cost estimates. And we have list this long on other capital projects that are are needs, not necessarily wants, but needs. I think this option gives it gives the town some interesting flexibility to prioritize their decisions. Yes, it ups the operational cost, and I'm glad to hear you say there's flexibility there in terms of we pay some of the outfit out of the capital budget that gets us to a gets us to a point that may be more reasonable from an op not reasonable, but more cost-effective on an annual basis.
It's it's actually a fairly fairly common method to create the shell, and it could be a warm shell or or a cold shell, meaning does it have the HVAC or does it not? And that then at that point, the specifications and the budget are solely in the control of the town, you know, how much do you want to spend on on that? Or or it can be a combination, a hybrid that says, okay, we will we'll put a million dollars into that, and anything above that is a capital contract. Or or you can you can do the formula the other way and say, we're only willing to spend $22 on annually on rent. So what budget, what outfit budget does that give us? And then you say, well, then you try to try to get it to that budget, and if it goes over that budget, then you cover the, you know, the overages in capital. So there there are a variety of ways that those can be constructed, and they're fairly common in commercial real estate.
I think the 14,000 also gives the 10-year growth, because I don't we don't know that necessarily well. I do know that when we looked at the building across the way as a possibility to buy, we looked at 15,000 square feet as the 10-year growth plan. We didn't know how we were going to grow all the way into that, that we were looking at that as a 25, 30-year investment. And that's 25,000 square feet, so we knew we needed at least half over a 10-year period. So the numbers kind of match some of the planning thought process that has gone on in the town, as well as the layout matches something that came was we began with.
That's interesting.
And in addition, with talking with the consultants, the ULI consultants for quite a while, when I when they first did this, that concept of creating the parking, one building with the parking in the back, what we have an issue with is an additional plus, I think, of doing that plan.
Okay.
Because the offices, the residential, there would be no parking, even with the retail during the day and the town staff, but at night and on weekends, that parking is clear.
Yes, yes. I do want to just add add to that, that there is, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I will say that having an off having a liner building there of some sort, or a building that lines the street, that's why you call it a liner building, that as we're proposing on on Shur Street, it does have some positive effects on on your on your downtown placemaking and your your sense of place, that people don't tend to like to walk past parking lots, but they will walk past buildings or along buildings. And I'm not I'm not disagreeing with the merits of what you're saying, I'm just wanting you to to be aware that those are the trade-offs that you're making if you choose to keep that space as a as an open parking space, that that it has a little bit less of the connectivity. I don't think it's that big of a deal because the building becomes larger than what we had proposed with A1. And we were working with the dimensions of trying to minimize the risk related to the office versus so.
So what it does do, though, what this does suggest is perhaps lowering that 587 net and capturing the pedestrian pathway and the Water Tower Plaza amenities, because you do have that parking and then you have that open. So we're creating an environment where we should connect, create that connectivity, which are those two items, Kurt, down on lower.
That's what we're going to talk about next.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yes, ma'am.
So I actually am not opposed to having residential down there. I think it's important to have diversity in housing. My actually only concern about that building was it being three-story. I thought, I guess originally I was thinking it would just be a, since it's a one-bedroom, it would just be a studio style. I don't know if that's what you call it, but did you look at it as an option to have it a two-story with just the residential on that second?
Well, I had not, primarily because of the efficiencies of that, you know, once once you have added the complexity of another use and you have the cost of the of the ground and the cost of the, you know, fire door connections and various things, it just the the three stories seem to still be in scale, you know, in scale with with downtown. And so the the answer is no, I had not looked into that. I certainly could, but I'm a little cautious about whether the numbers would work, but I could be.
The building that's across would be across the street where like Indigo is, that that would be considered two, the height of that, would that be considered like a two-story height or so it would be actually be taller than that building?
Well, three stories will be.
Yeah, that so, yes, it's a two-story building with high ceilings.
I'm just having a hard time visualizing how that's all would work, look right to me. And and I also agree with a lot of the the parking comments here. We're adding more commercial, you know, and then we have to provide parking for the residents. We're talking about a town hall. I don't see where everybody's going to park. And so I think we would, if we choose to go this route, we're going to have to figure out some additional parking, so.
I think in the comments I sent back to you is we need an overall parking strategy for downtown if we're going to fill the thing out.
Right.
Because you can't just do it incrementally.
And I, as far as the.
Unless you want to make the third floor a parking area with a facade.
And as far as town hall there, I think it's an appealing idea because that is happens to be something we're looking, we're going to be looking for in the future, but I, you know, adding the numbers, as Commissioner Byrne said, that that doesn't make sense to me the way she laid it out, whereas the commercial, a CIP-type project, that would that might be more, you know, work work a little bit better, make more sense as far as the numbers go, but we'd have to explore that more.
I guess, so I guess the thing that really we have to be careful with with the CIP, I think. Mr. Smith has given us a good view as he pulled it together. We only have so much debt capacity. And if we say we're going to build a town hall, we don't have anything left to do anything else without significantly raising taxes or going for bonds or doing that kind of stuff. So I think this is all about priorities, and I don't see from a financial standpoint in the next five years, the town being able to do with their current without significantly going after additional tax dollars, actually adding the burden of of a town hall that we know is going to be a minimum of half of our CIP right now. I mean, that's that's throwing 10 to 12 million dollars right on top of it. And so I think that's asking a lot of a new town manager as they come in to try to figure all that out. It is, it is 300,000 is a is a lot, but it's less than what a debt payment would be, it's less than a debt payment would be. And the other part of it, even though it's kind of a book transfer, leasing it does get it off the town books in terms of real estate, and so we will get tax revenue from it that offsets some of that. So that's, you know, we pay in the lease, but we also get it back, so the net would be less, if you will. I had that right, correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So to your point, though, the numbers are complex, and how do you how do you bring all these numbers back and look at it? But you're just looking right now for what are the possible vision places? What what we don't want, I think there's some consensus of pretty lukewarm on on the residential, but.
And again, the if we can find a combination that works, we're happy to
Yeah.
to move forward with that. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, so I just want to give my comments, too.
Yes, please.
It's hard to get it worded in edgewise sometimes.
No, it isn't. You just have to ask the chair for permission.
So I've thought a lot and looking at this corner a lot, the the vision of three-story buildings and and what that brings and how that kind of changes the dynamic of our historic downtown. For me, you know, to to have these large buildings that kind of overshadow, if you will, the historic buildings that we have, it's really important to me that the character and the integrity of the facade of the buildings is something that's cared for, because we take so much pride in our in our downtown as a true destination for Waxahau. So that that's one of my concerns. We have a parking problem, period. We have it now, will continue to have it unless, like we said, we put a parking strategy in place. People sometimes don't come to downtown because they can't find a place to park, and sometimes they're unwilling to walk for whatever reason. I don't know why that is, it just it just is. It's one of the pieces of feedback that we get all the time, the not having the amount of parking that we need. For me, I've always envisioned downtown Waxahau and the town of Waxahau residing in downtown Waxahau. So the having the building and having town hall be down on that corner is something that that I've always thought was going to happen. And that's something that I'm supportive of. For me, building A2 doesn't make sense, so I would prefer to go with the ULI approach, and I would prefer for us to to move forward that way.
You know, keen off of Commissioner DeFinis's comment, we, it's not your job to solve our parking problem. So we we I just want to make sure we.
Thank you.
You understand, but it is time that we probably go back and revisit how we put together a parking strategy for now. We've had options before, but it's kind of chicken or egg here. We built something, but you can't park anywhere, so we're going to do shuttle buses from some from the Food Lion parking lot to bring everybody down. You know, it's, we probably need to look in parallel what that would be and what the impact would be, because it's going to be a ripple effect on whomever makes the decision down the road on that.
I would just like to add also, so I know that's something we're looking at, and I challenge that we take that a step forward and think outside the box and try to figure out what that is. But I I'm in support of the project. I also, and I know we're going to talk numbers next, I want it to make sense fiscally as well for the town. So I'm really interested to hear the next round of comments, because I want to make sure it's something that we all agree to.
Okay, wonderful. I will say about parking, it lack of parking is a is a good problem to have because it means that you have something that is attractive, that people want to come to. So it's while it's a it's a bit of a double-edged sword, it is, it's a it's an indicator that people want to be in your downtown.
Well, and I think quite candidly, if we attack it, you've said it, the reason when they gave us the recognition for the downtown award in 2018, all the comments have been about we have great walkability and we're enhancing it, so we ought to build the parking strategy in support of that to take advantage of the walkability, and some of these enhancements even add to that.
Okay, well, wonderful. And that the I'm I appreciate that I'm getting consistent information back, so it sounds like it'll be a fairly easy decision for y'all to make about what it sounds like maybe the decision has already been made, but I I or based on the.
You have some consensus, you're seeing.
Yeah, exactly. So that is, that's good information to have. I do want, before I start this next section, I do want to, and this, Ms. DeFinis, this is in your in response to your comment about the importance of fiscal responsibility within. It is important to to remember that this that this project, that these parcels, that this is not just a real estate transaction. This isn't just about we're buying property and we're providing other things in return, that this is about a a big picture that is together creating economic benefits for your town. And so that is, there are multiplier effects that take place, and there are things where it's kind of the the cliche of, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. And so part of what we're trying to do with this project and doing it through a coordinated project is to is to bring the tide in to lift all the boats. So the benefits of many of the things that we're going to be talking about next are not specific benefits to the projects that we would do, but they are benefits to the whole town or to the whole downtown and to the economic activity that's taking place in downtown. So I just want to remind all of us that this is not just about the actual dollars that are transacting between between two parties, but this is about creating something that is more than what it is right now, so that then it has multiplier effects and and has a positive impact on your downtown and on your taxes.
Definitely gets back to like my opening comments about it's your vision and how can we best implement that? So however you want to see the downtown taken forward, how can we do that through this development agreement and in a partnership? development agreement and in a partnership so that it it can move forward in the way that you all see it wanting to move forward?
I'd also add that some, some of the things listed in the public improvements that New East is about to go over have been things that the town has been wanting to do for years already, kind of meaning to do. We, we have existing plans for the, the West North Main and the Church Street improvements. The, the difference is that this, this will be a way of making it happen in conjunction with the private development at the same time, so you really get efficiencies and you also, you make it feel more cohesive. So the, these aren't necessarily new ideas, it's just a way of actually bringing, bringing it to fruition. Yeah.
Yes, and that was our goal as we, as, as we were working on this, on the plan, was looking, looking at what, what your goals have been stated, but then also bringing the perspective that we have, that both Matt has in, in the work that he's done in public-private partnerships in other communities and then the work that I have, the experience that I have in doing small and incremental development in downtowns. Now, very often, the work that, that my clients through the Incremental Development Alliance, that they, they are dealing with more distressed areas. Y'all are not distressed and you are in a very good position of, of being a place that people want to come to, and now it's a matter of how do you shape it so that it, so that, again, the, the sum are greater than the parts. And so, anyway, that, that leads us into what these public amenities are, and I'm hopeful that, that, that this will guide you towards, give you perspective for the next decisions, next set of decisions we have for you. Okay. So when we looked at the, when we looked at, at, again, at, at your various plans and talking with Kurt about what the visioning had been for downtown, when we looked at this area specifically, we came up with some recommended public amenities. Some of them were things that were already on your list and others were tweaking things a little bit. So you can see that, that we have the West, West North Main Street and North Church Street improvements that are already part of that analysis that you have had done. We looked at doing improvements along, along North Broom Street, the sidewalk to create some very generous sidewalks that have a, a sense of pedestrian ownership there, particularly with an active first-level use of, of restaurants, you know, of restaurants and some retail, but primarily a restaurant. There's a need for, for sidewalk, there's, there is an appeal to sidewalk dining, to trees that create shade and, and a sense of physical protection. And so we're seeing that, that North Broom Street having some significant sidewalk amenities would be, would be good or important for the, for the success of this. We looked also at the, we heard from you that you wanted space for events, that currently it's that parking lot at the corner that's used for, for a lot of your events. And so we started looking at other, other alternatives for that. Well, certainly, one of them would be to use the Nivens Price parking lot. That's easy and simple, big, open space. But, but we really saw North Church Street as being an opportunity to create a space that could be, that the street portion could be closed so that those could be community events in that space. That rather than having a designated off-street space, why not make the street? And streets are kind of towns' living rooms, so to turn that space into a really, a, a nice, visible and, but yet comfortable outdoor room that is, that has edges to it. So those, and then we looked also at the Water Tower Plaza. I don't know, you mentioned, Mayor, you, you mentioned DPAC. I'm sure then you're familiar with the Water Tower at American Tobacco and the plaza that's under that. It, it is a great, it's a wonderful place where concerts take place and various, it is protected from the street, which helps some with the sound, a little bit with the sound. It also has a very loud waterfall in there that's used to mask the sound from the freeway. So all of those things are kind of part of the, the planning of that outdoor space. But my point here is that we kind of looked to the American Tobacco complex and thought, huh, this, this water tower could really serve as being both kind of a, a focal point from a distance, so people know where the water tower is, but that also, it kind of creates this, it's identifiable, but it also could create some really neat outdoor plaza space there. So those were the, the areas that we felt, oh, and then the pedestrian, pedestrian pathway. If you'll see, it's, it, it's the dash lines with arrows. There's one going north and south next to the A1 building that connects to the, to the Water Tower Plaza. And then there's one that goes east and west. And that, again, is along that, that leg of the town-owned property related to that house. And so the idea of, of connecting the Nivens Price parking lot to the, over towards North Broom Street and then the north and south connection of West Main Street to the plaza. And so we really saw those as not just being sidewalks. And I love, I love the, the passeo that you have next to the Nivens Price building. I, I just think that it has so much personality to it. I'm imagining some, that these connections would be similar, perhaps with string lights like you have, things that give you light and space and interesting stuff along the way. So we really view those as being some nice amenities for, for creating that pedestrian connectivity.
Love like the, the hidden pathway back there and just how that could be a great place-making effort. It's off Main Street, people in Waxall will know it, and just let the community kind of take ownership of that space by providing it to them. Is, just that, as you mentioned, the alleyway next to Nivens Price, I mean, that's one of the coolest parts of, you know, downtown Main Street.
So these were the, as we looked at, at, again, at what your visions, what, what we saw in your, in your materials, these were the, the recommendations that we were making and how those might be implemented. And that's also, by the way, one of the reasons that we thought that the, that Building B was an important component, that, that by Building B being at that location, it helps to, it helps to frame, to create an edge to, to North Church Street. And, and we feel like that that helps to, it, it creates an outdoor room. And so that building was important. I recognize that parking is important and so there may be questions about, well, gee, couldn't that be parking? Well, yes, it could, but we think that the benefits of the way that that creates a space on, an outdoor room, a North Church Street outweigh the, the number of parking spaces that it takes, takes up.
And from a larger planning perspective, with the Ardmore and Price going in, most of those folks, if they're walking into downtown, that will be your first entrance into commercial downtown Waxall because it's really the church in between that. And so having that as kind of a lead, you know, small-scale retail is one of the reasons we, we were really looking at that corner building.
Okay, so then I've broken this down into what the public investments that were part of our proposal are. And I, I had sent a spreadsheet to Kurt.
Just for your information.
Yes.
We filled up the, the first 20 minutes. Kurt walked us through this and explained everything.
Okay.
So we got a good, yeah, we all have a copy.
All right, that's wonderful. Yay. So the, so these were the three items that we put, that, that we put as part of our proposal that y'all would be participating in financially. That would be the West North Main Street, streetscape improvements, along with the North Church Street improvements, the things that, and then we added to that the, a shared participation in the, in the street improvements along North Broom Street. That is a, and Kurt may have told you this, I put a fairly generous allowance on that one because it's an NC DOT road, they tend to be demanding and expensive. So it was, I used a different, I, I, I used a much higher kind of per linear foot assumption, assumption on that one than, than what your numbers are on the other streets. And that's specifically related to be, to it being DOT. Then we look at the optional public investment. So these are the things that are in our, that are in our plan, but that you, y'all can do them or not do them. You can say, yeah, we think we wanna do them, and then later on decide you don't wanna do them. It's, you don't have to commit immediately whether these things are gonna happen. But I did put out there some budgets that I felt like were, were realistic, perhaps even generous, in terms of what those expenses might be, because we all know it's better when it comes in at less than, than what you were expecting. So I tried to, to aim a little high on, on the range of what those numbers could be. So you can see that what you have on the, you have the public parking, you know, pave and landscape, the Nivens Price building, that includes some streetscape improvements along there because it's just efficient to do all of that at one time as, as part of that, part of that concrete, asphalt and trees, so being the three, the, the three ingredients to parking lots. Then immediately to the right, you see the, the Water Tower Plaza and the streetscape improvements along McDonald Street. And those are, those are fairly minor, but the, the focus there obviously is the Water Tower Plaza. And there's, yes, ma'am?
I had a question about the Water Tower Plaza.
Absolutely.
Have you considered, is that something we could do like a brick sale to get community spirit involved in the town, you know, where you buy the brick and you get your name on it and it becomes part of the plaza?
Yes, yes, and those, those tend to be more about building community spirit than actually making a significant dent in what the costs.
I understand, yeah.
Of infrastructure are, but absolutely.
They're so good at building a sense of ownership of that area.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. I'm trying to think, the, oh, yes, with, with that plaza, there, there's just such a, in terms of what your budget would be, it's kind of like, well, you know, it could be extravagant or it could be very minimal. So there, there's just a whole lot of, and, and sometimes you just pick the budget and get what you can for that. So at, at some point, that, what I suspect is that, well, let me, let me say first, so then the third part is the pedestrian paths. And so what I suspect, the parking lot will be easier to price once you've decided that you wanna do it, then we just do some basic landscaping. I mean, parking lots are pretty standard. So that, that one's fairly easy to figure out what the actual numbers are based on your amenities, how big the trees are that you put there, how many tree islands, what your local ordinance requires, because different ordinances require different, you know, different lands, have different landscaping requirements and such. So that one, I think, is the easiest one to come up with a number on. The, the plaza is, the Water Tower Plaza is really what, what do you wanna spend on it? What do you wanna do with it? Because it could be something with an extravagant water feature, it could be something.
A stage.
A stage.
Electrical hookups and the whole nine yards and lighting, or it could just be hardscape improvement.
Yeah.
benches and stuff. So that's hard for us to kind of give you a price on what that would look like until having that conversation with how you'd wanna look at that.
Yes, but I had felt like when I was putting together, it's like, you know, for $150,000, you could do something pretty decent there. The, the, you know, if you wanna start talking about doing public restrooms and, you know, various things like that, then you're starting to add, add some more expensive items to it. But I had felt like for $150,000, you could do a pretty decent plaza in that location. But again, you know, is it, what do you want? And, and how extravagant or how basic? So those were, and then, of course, the last thing was the pedestrian pathways. And so what I'd like to, to kind of present as part of this is that if these are things that are appealing to you as part of this project, that what, what the commitment that we would need from you early at, at this, not today, but at the development agreement point of the process, is that it is a commitment to cover the, the design, design and engineering on this so that then you could get the prices. So, and it would, would be at that pricing, and there's an iterative process where you tell them what your budget is, they try to design it to that budget, then you decide you want something different and they, you know, so there's, there, there's some of an iterative process on that. But what we would be asking, what we're asking you is whether you want this to be part of the design and the planning, design and engineering of this project. We're not asking you to commit, commit next week to how much do you wanna spend on these things. Is, do you wanna take this to the next step? And then your obligation is to cover those, those expenses, those additional expenses that are incurred as part of doing that planning, design and, and engineering. Most of the planning's kind of already there, but the design and engineering.
So when the, the board that procured this land and set out the vision for the town hall there, the Water Tower Plaza and the pedestrian pathway was a part of their thinking all the way over to the Nivens Price. That was part of the thinking. So I, I don't, I haven't heard anything in the nine years since then or eight years that would say we wouldn't wanna do that. I'm glad you brought up the engineering, design and engineering because I think there's some design and engineering challenges that would have to be looked at, delivery access to, you know, some of the Mary O'Neills as a for instance, because you mentioned, do you really want, do you want public restrooms? You beautify this whole area and you have a bunch of porta-potties everywhere, kind of takes away from it. So, but that design and engineering part of it would be important. But I, in my way of thinking, it's keeping with the spirit of what this property was always bought for. So I think, I think from my perspective, we, we should look at it very hard.
And look at us as like the project managers, the stewards that can go out and kind of hard-nose with the engineering firms and the construction firms and just drive the process and get it done all together versus having to kind of build out all of these by your staff and then going through the government process of upset bid or, not upset bid, but having kind of the best, best bid process and everything.
Just go around. I mean, what are your thoughts?
Absolutely. So I, I believe that the pedestrian pathway is something that we've needed for a really long time. I think even when we have our current state events, you see a lot of people walking that way, even though it's not, not a true pathway right now, you do see a lot of people walking that way because we do utilize North Main Street and Church Street for almost all of our events. We already have people co-locating in those spaces for Autumn Treasures, for Kaleidoscope, for almost everything that we do currently downtown. So I do believe that those pedestrian pathways will be something that enhances the walkability all day, every day, which is, you know, adds in value. For me, I would like to see kind of Waxall stamp, if you will, on both the pedestrian park pathway and the Water Tower Plaza. We have so many local artisans and I would like it to be kind of up to the, the personality that we have. So I think that there's some, some advantage to partnerships with some of our local artisan friends as well to ensure that we kind of keep that up. I do wanna make sure that we don't do anything to disrupt the historic integrity of the Water Tower slash tank and as well as the historical integrity of the Duncan McDonald House. Those are both treasures that Waxall has taken a lot of care in, in investing in and I wanna ensure that we are very, very careful and thoughtful and, and make sure that nothing happens to those buildings while, while we're taking on these next steps to improve the downtown. For me right now, the parking lot, I'm kind of hot and cold, like, do I 100% need it? No, to be honest.
It's working right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I share a lot of the same sentiments. I think it would be, you know, wonderful to have a paved Nivens Price lot, but at the same point, I think it's working pretty well right now with the work that staff has already done to make as many spaces and the best use as possible. I definitely really would like to look at those pedestrian pathways and the Water Tower Plaza. I think those are just such a great way to, it's such a great gift to give back to the community, such a great sense of placemaking and, and belonging and home that can be created there. So I'm very happy to spend some money on the engineering and see what can really be done there. It's my two cents.
I'm 100% supportive of, of doing that whole idea. Oftentimes, I'm, I'm parking in the public parking and walking the backs behind the McDonald's house over to Mary O'Neal's and up the alleyway there. And I'm always saying, every, every time I do it, I'm walking on that grass and saying, we have got to put a walkway here. So I, I love that idea. I like the idea of being able to block off Church Street to create even more open events.
space, kind of like how we block off down there in front of Dream Chasers. And then I love the Water Tower lot because it's just creating more gathering space for the community. So anything we can do that adds creativity, such as the art that you were, that Commissioner Defense was talking about, anything like that that would bring in the character of Waxall, I think, would be a positive.
I love the idea as well. The plaza coming from behind the building on west north Main on the corner and going from there, even though it's a larger building, and having town hall downtown, which was the original plan. And a lot of money was spent on that. So either here or there, we're going back into that plan, which I think it's a really good one, and using that, utilizing that parking there, which I know the, Church Street takes, building would take about 10 spaces. But we're getting back those spaces that we don't have now behind that building, and then carrying that whole plaza all the way from behind there around the corner and doing landscaping where you can hide that part of the parking, where it's not looking at a blank parking space, but looking at a beautiful plaza that comes all the way into the Water Tower area, into the McDonald House, which we'd utilize and make it a much nicer place where we have a lot of event space and also space where Parks and Rec uses the McDonald House, making that one big flow all the way around to the Price and Evans. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Great.
Quick question. If the town is the user of the building on A1, does the Nivens Price building being paved or unpaved matter at all for your office users? Is that fine? Okay. Didn't know if you, like, needed that or is that a requirement?
The only thing that I would say on that is that the landscaping and the tree part of it probably wouldn't hurt that area. It just, it looks a little desolate over there.
And, and you know, you can, you can plant trees in its existing condition.
Yeah.
It, it will end up with a
Huh?
Yeah. It's, I, 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 not that my opinion matters, but I, I tend to agree with, with the council members who are saying, eh, you know, it's working as it is. It's, it's a big price to, to, to pave that lot. I mean, it'd be nice and finished and glossy and new and, and all of that stuff. But I, I actually think there's something kind of charming about having a gravel lot as you're, you know, in your downtown. So I, I don't think that that's a bad choice at all. If I were choosing where to allocate my resources, I, I would, that wouldn't be my top, top priority either.
So just want to clarify, what I'm hearing sounds like most consensus is streetscape improvements on north Main, north Church Street, north Broom Street, the Water Tower Plaza, and then the pedestrian connection alleyway between Church Street and Broom Street.
So I do have a question about Broom Street, north Broom Street. So with, with it being a DOT road and with that already being a very congested place in town, all day, every day, all the time, by expanding the sidewalk, are we taking any space out of travel lanes?
No, the DOT wouldn't let you do that anyway.
Okay.
It would be, it would be adjusting where the, where the location of the building is in order to be able to, to allocate a 10 or 12-foot sidewalk there.
Okay. And then Kurt, is that, the 10 or 12-foot sidewalk, is that consistent with what we're doing with the tap grant?
It's, it's actually more generous than what we, what we planned with the tap grant.
Okay.
The idea for that would be the restaurant space on A1 would somewhat overflow or be part of that, right, on North Broom Street?
Oh, yes. Yeah. That, I would imagine, I would imagine that y'all would want to see outdoor dining there. It is something that draws people to a location. It gives them the sense of where people are and people want to be where people are. But it is given, given the congestion of the amount of traffic that's on North Broom Street in particular, it's important to have some fairly generous
Buffer.
Yes, tree, tree plantings and such, so that those will, again, give that sense of protection between, between the street or separation between the street and the, and the sidewalk and the pedestrians who are there. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, because you were trying to summarize. So on her, on the budget sheet she gave us, that's, it's the, on the public improvements in the proposals, it's the three there. And then on the optional ones, it's not, other than a few trees, it's not the Nivens parking, Nivens Price parking lot, but it is the pedestrian pathway and Water Tower to move forward. So
So it's
we just eliminated the one.
Yeah, the $400,000.
I mean, we can, I just wanted to make sure we were consistent with
Yeah. I mean, we can look at landscaping as being part of the Nivens Price work that we're doing. I guess where I'm going here is just, what we're going to deliver back to the staff is an agreement, a development agreement for you all to review with the town attorney and to make sure that it's aligning with what we're hearing today.
Great. All right. And, and to summarize, what we're hearing today is that you, that you would like to explore the idea of one building and that town hall would be the second and third floor of that, and that we would have an active use on the ground floor, being, again, our goal is, is a restaurant and a small amount of retail. Do y'all know any farm-to-table restaurants that, that are looking for locations?
One, yes.
Oh, there is one. I hear, I hear, they're, they have a bit of a TV show, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, did, exactly. The, so I feel like, thank, I want to thank you. I feel like we have gotten the information that we were looking for, the guidance that we're looking for, so that then we can come back and, and have something that then we can continue to negotiate.
I just have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we don't do A2, are you proposing we just leave it gravel like it is right now or pave it?
I would, that's a great question. I would probably suggest that that be a paved lot, since it will be your town hall and since it will have a bit more, I, I would
That's not put in the budget then, in any numbers here.
I think that, that, again, we, we can go, that decision can be made later. My recommendation to you now would be that it'd probably be best to pave that lot.
That would be tied in with the first part that we were discussing as far as the private development of that building. We would pave it and it would probably be a part of just the cost of that building, the development.
We can come back to us with some numbers.
And, and remember what Charlie mentioned at the last meeting, that that decision, then they will talk about, does, is that full, the full corner lot go as part of the, what they're working on, or is that remain town property? And, and we pave it and it, you guys all have to work that out. But
Yeah.
Charlie, our attorney was talking about, you know, if that's public, that's, then we have to carve that out as public, et cetera. So
I, I would say that
All work together, but
Yeah. I would say that, that our, I have imagined that those remain as one lot and that it's a private lot.
Good. Okay.
That it's not, unlike in the Nivens Price situation, where I really think it serves the town's best interest to, y'all own that in the long term. You can therefore figure out whether you want to do something with that again in, in the future. I, I do feel like for the, for that corner building, that that, given the size of that building, that that, that parking lot really needs to be with it.
That's good news.
Okay.
There would be a stipulation in the contract that that parking would never be built upon, correct?
It would not be built upon while the town is leasing the property. I think that, that it, to say forever and ever, I, I think might not be in the town's best interests, because there might be a reason at some point in the future that the town decided that, or that, that the town wouldn't be opposed to that being built on. It, I, I would caution you about, about putting something as a parking lot in perpetuity.
What you're really saying is that that is a part of the, the property, not a part of the town's parking strategy.
Exactly.
And, and we have to build a parking strategy that, that lays it all.
So it's kind of like reserving that space too for anything that would be needed in the future as the economy changes or whatever.
That parking lot could be a part of the town's strategy for the 10 years that it's leasing.
Right. Right.
So it's not necessarily like it's going to be something else, some other users there.
Right.
But in perpetuity, I mean, again, you're thinking 100 years from now, 200 years from now, if there's a deed restriction on that or some type of covenant, then that is what it's going to be, even if there's demand or growth or there's a different council or commission that wants to see something different. Yeah. There won't be any cars, so.
There'll all be droning, drone flying around, right?
So is it safe to assume that you guys are going to go downtown now and have dinner so you can avoid traffic?
Exactly. We do, I, Kurt can tell you this, that the first time I came to, came to Waxall, I just fell in love with it. I'm like, oh, my gosh, it reminded me very much of the small town that I grew up in, only more vibrant and more
Happens to a lot of us. That's how we end up here.
Yeah. It's, it's really, you know, and, and very often, communities that are almost exurban communities to a, a large metropolitan entity like Charlotte, very often it, you know, the further out you go, it's just, you know, drive till you qualify kind of thing. But I can see that Waxall has its own kind of magnetic force and that, that
It'll pull you in. You never know. You might be living here someday.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I had a grand time walking around and talking to people who were walking their dogs and stuff and learning a bit about your town in the process. So it's really a charming place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you need from us?
I think we have the information we need to be able to proceed towards, towards drafting a development agreement. And then we can negotiate what some of the terms are within that.
Our, our goal is to get this turned around rather fast to you all, so
Great. Thank you.
We understand.
If that's still aligned with everybody else's timeframe then, yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you so much for your time today.
So we'll go ahead and adjourn then, okay?
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.